The Senate will come to order. The senators will please take their seats. Those persons entitled to the privilege of the floor will please retire to the gallery. The senators in all in attendance will stand and be led in prayer by the Reverend Joe Newman, Baptist Minister from Chesapeake, Virginia. Everyone will please remain standing and be led in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America by our Senate Page Shayla Owens.
Let us pray together. Eternal and Almighty God, we take a moment to say thank you for the abundant blessings that we as citizens of the Commonwealth of Virginia enjoy every day. We thank you for the freedoms we enjoy, the natural beauty of our state, and we thank you for granting your favors to us. Let us always be mindful of our fellow man and all of the other creatures that we share this entire Commonwealth with. Eternal God, we ask you again to remind us of the shortness not only of our lives but often even the shortness of our terms in office. Let us understand fully the awesome responsibilities that we have not only to our fellow citizens but also to those who come after us and our eternal responsibilities to you, our Maker. You have ordained us to handle the important affairs of our Commonwealth and to also cast a vision of who we as a people should be both now and to the future. Let us, Eternal God, be right-minded public service for your great creation and always take you the right source as our guide. We thank you for these dedicated men and women who take their time and their talents to serve their fellow citizens here in the Commonwealth. In the name of all that is holy, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All those in attendance will please record their vote. Clerk will close the roll.
You have a quorum, Mr. President. Senate Journal for Monday, February 3, 2020.
The junior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Kiggins, moves that the reading of the Journal be waived. All in favor waiving the reading of the Journal will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
As 31 knows eight.
As 31 knows eight, the reading of the Journal is waived. The clerk will report any communication from the House of Delegates. The senior senator from Fairfax.
Mr. President, I move that we waive the reading of the communications from the House.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the reading of the communication from the House of Delegates be waived? All in favor waiving the reading will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
As 35 knows three.
As 35 knows three, the reading of the communication from the House of Delegates is waived. The clerk will report any communication from the governor.
We do not have any, sir.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now comes the time in our morning hour. We have the privilege and the pleasure of welcoming our distinguished guests with us here in the Senate Gallery. I will give my usual reminder that the way this will proceed is that a senator will stand up and recognize an individual or group. I will then offer the warm welcome of the Senate, and at the very end, we will all applaud together. And I'd like to begin by recognizing— Is he up there yet? Not yet? Okay. I'll start with the senator from Alexandria, Senator Eben.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rise for two introductions.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
Since 1989, Equality Virginia has served as the Commonwealth's leading advocacy organization for LGBT equality. And over 30 years, they've sought to educate the public, provide resources, empower the community to make their voices heard, and they do this all in order to create a safe and welcoming Virginia. Today is their annual Day of Action with 200 supporters from all across the Commonwealth. They're here to advocate for many bills important to the community, including the Virginia Values Act. They will host a legislative reception tonight at the Library of Virginia from 5:30 to 7:30, and all are welcome to attend. With that, I ask that you give Equality Virginia the welcome of the Senate.
I thank the senator. Would our friends from Equality Virginia in the gallery please rise if you are able? Thank you all so much for joining us here today. We are always grateful to see you in the Capitol and appreciate your wonderful advocacy for justice and for fairness and for equality. It's so important in this day and age, and so we appreciate you. You're welcome back here anytime, and I would ask everyone to please join me and extend the warmest welcome of the Senate to our friends from Equality Virginia. Senator from Alexandria, Senator Eben.
Thank you, Mr. President. For my next—I have another introduction.
Senator has the floor.
We're also joined here today by several representatives of parents, friends of lesbians and gays, the first and largest organization for LGBTQ people, their friends, families and allies in the country. I'd particularly like to recognize Beth Cox from PFLAG Richmond, as well as Elizabeth Fogarty from Arlington, and Patrick Cochran. They represent hundreds of families and thousands of allies across the Commonwealth. With that, I ask that you give them the welcome of the Senate.
Thank the senator. Would our friends from parents, friends of lesbians and gays please rise to the gallery if you are able? Great. Thank you all so much also for being here today, and thank you for your work to fight for equality and inclusion, fairness and justice for everyone. We are very grateful to you. I would ask everybody to please join me and extend the warmest welcome of the Senate to our distinguished guests. The junior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Kiggins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I'd like to welcome Pastor Joe Newman. He said our prayer for us this morning. He is a retired Baptist minister and former member of the City Council of Chesapeake. He also served eight years on the city council there. He has run his own financial advisory business in Hampton Roads for over 40 years, and he's accompanied in the gallery today by his sister-in-law, Barbara Caraway, who's the City Treasurer of Chesapeake.
I thank the senator. Would the Reverend Joe Newman and Barbara Caraway please rise to the gallery? You're already risen. Very good. Thank you all so much for joining us here today. Reverend, thank you for that very beautiful prayer. It was very heartfelt, and we appreciate that very much. And also, Barbara, thank you for your tremendous leadership. He was bragging on you before we started, said you've served for over 30 years as Treasurer of Chesapeake, so thank you for your family's public service. I would ask everybody to please join me and extend the warmest welcome of the Senate to our two distinguished guests. Senator from Southern Fairfax, Senator Barker.
Mr. President, I rise for an introduction.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
Mr. President and members of the Senate, frequently during the legislative session, we see walking around the halls of the Pocahontas Building, people—members of the Ark of Virginia advocating for people with developmental disabilities. Today, for the first time, the Board of Directors of the Ark of Virginia have personally come to advocate on—for their mission, including Howard Cullum, a former Secretary of Health and Human Resources, and Marvin Figueroa, who is Legislative Director for the Governor. With a platform this year called Our Time Has Come, they are here calling for a full investment in the Commonwealth's community-based developmental disability system, and I hope it be your pleasure to welcome them, give them a warm welcome to the Senate.
Thank the senator. Would our friends from the Ark of Virginia please rise to the gallery if you are able? Thank you all so much for joining us here today and for your presence constantly on Capitol Hill, fighting for people with disabilities and for families. It really touches every single one of us in Virginia, and so we're grateful to you. Always pleased to see the orange, being well represented, and you're welcome back here anytime. I would ask everyone to please join me and extend the warmest welcome of the Senate to our friends from the Ark of Virginia. Senator from Hanover, Senator McDougal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I rise for the purposes of two introductions.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
Mr. President, we have with us partially in the gallery and partially in Senate Room Three, a group of students from Hanover High School. They are led by their instructor, Jennifer Wayne, who's their criminal justice teacher. And, Mr. President, they're a large group watching the process as we go on today. If you could offer them the warm welcome of the Senate.
I thank the senator. Would Jennifer Wayne and our other leaders from Hanover High School in the gallery please rise if you are able? Thank you all so much for joining us here today. It's always wonderful to see our great young leaders in the Capitol, and we appreciate the work that you're doing, particularly around criminal justice reform. It's a big issue for all of us, and so you will lead the Commonwealth to a much, much brighter future because of your work. We love Hanover. I know that your senator is very grateful to see you, and I would ask everybody to please join me and extend the warmest welcome of the Senate to our leaders from Hanover High Senator from Hanover, Senator McDougal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rise for the purposes of a second introduction.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, we have another group in the gallery. Mr. President, they are a group of 4-H students with the Hanover Heritage Equestrian Center. They are with their leader, Kim Lawhorn, and, Mr. President, she might not know this, but when I was the age of some of the girls in the group, we used to farm her father-in-law's piece of property up on 301. But, Mr. President, these young ladies are learning a tremendous amount specifically about horsemanship, horse care, and how to compete at the state and local level. And, Mr. President, I learned that my daughter is even—is now riding one of the horses that one of them used to ride when—historically. Mr. President, if you could offer the warm welcome to Emily Robertson, Madison and Morgan Vaughn, Haley and Grace Seitzer, Ally Talbot, Dylan and Evie Klein, and Morgan Bond.
I thank the senator. Would our friends from Virginia 4-H please rise to the gallery if you are able? Thank you all so much for joining us here today. We appreciate your presence and your leadership and the eloquent and generous words of your senator from Hanover, Senator McDougal. You're learning some really tremendous skills, and his daughter rode, and my daughter learned how to ride, so I've learned what a canter is and a gallop and all the wonderful things that you learn in that tremendous sport. So we wish you nothing but success and the best of luck, and I would ask everybody to please join me and extend the warmest welcome of the Senate to our leaders from Virginia The senior senator from Chesterfield, Senator Chase.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. In the gallery today, we have a very special guest, Kristi Hecker, and she is actually shadowing me today from Chesterfield County. She is actually a practicing physical therapist. She's also a graduate from VCU and works for Bonsycor. It's great to have her today, Mr. President, and I'd ask you to extend the warm welcome of the Senate. Thank you.
I thank the senator. Would Kristi Hecker please rise to the gallery if you are able? Kristi, thank you so much for joining us here in your Capitol in the Senate today. We're always grateful to have our wonderful constituents. I know your senator is particularly delighted to have you shadowing her today, and we thank you for the work you do in physical therapy, so important on the Commonwealth. I would ask everybody to please join me and extend the warmest welcome of the Senate to our friend Kristi Hecker. Senator from Arlington, Senator Favola.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise for purposes of an introduction.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. With us in the gallery today are several members of the Northern Virginia Chapter of Voice. Voice stands for Virginians Organized for Interfaith Community Engagement. They are led today by the Reverend Dr. Keith Savage, the Reverend Walter Clark, and other leaders in that NOVA chapter. Voice is committed to bringing people together across religious, racial, ethnic, economic, and political party affiliations. This group has focused on social justice causes and has been very effective in influencing policy at many levels of government, especially when it comes to affordable housing, addressing homelessness, immigrant rights, health care, and dental care. And they're here today to continue their advocacy on those areas and to talk to lawmakers about pending legislation. I do hope it is the pleasure of the Senate to give the Northern Virginia Chapter of Voice a very warm welcome. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the senator. Would our friends and leaders from Northern Virginia Voice please rise to the gallery if you are able? Thank you all so much for joining us here today. We are very grateful for your tremendous leadership and for your advocacy on behalf of people who often don't have a voice, and so thank you for raising up our Commonwealth and adhering to our highest values. We thank Reverend Walter Clark and also my friend Reverend Keith Savage out of Manassas, and he's done a tremendous job, so you're welcome back here anytime, and I would ask everybody to please join me and extend the warmest welcome of the Senate to our leaders from Northern Virginia Voice. Senior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Distef.
Mr. President, I rise for an introduction.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, today in the gallery, we're honored to have two individuals from Virginia Beach Police Department. The first one is Chelsea Lindemeyer. Chelsea's in property crimes and has served there for several years, eight years, I believe, investigating burglaries, larcenies, auto thefts, and other nonviolent crimes. Second, we have Carrie Fair, who's a retired now, medically retired, special investigator who worked for our SVU unit. June 13, 2017, during the, I guess, execution of a search warrant, her and her colleagues were shot at over 100 times. One of her colleagues was shot and hit, landed on top of her and the other colleague, and tumbled down a full flight of stairs. So she was injured during that, and she's with us today in the gallery. We're happy she's with us. We're happy she's still with us, like, really with us. And with that, I'd like to give the warmest welcome of the Senate, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank the senator. Would our friends Chelsea Lindemeyer and Carrie Fair please rise to the gallery if you are able? Chelsea and Carrie, thank you all so much for your tremendous service with our police department. Thank you for your sacrifice and that of your family for keeping our citizens safe. It's the highest calling that you could possibly have, and thank you for all that you've done to turn your pain into purpose and to help so many people and inspire them. So we echo the eloquent, generous words of the senior senator from Virginia Beach. You, of course, are welcome back here anytime and give our best to our friends in Virginia Beach. I would ask everybody to please join me and extend the warmest welcome of the Senate to our two wonderful leaders. Senator from Loudoun, Senator Bell.
Mr. President, rise for purposes of an introduction.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, today seated in the gallery, we have a number of members from the Virginia Association of Nurse Anesthetists. Nurse anesthetists are an integral part of Virginia's healthcare system. Many nurse anesthetists serve on the front lines, providing quality anesthesia care to our military members and veterans as well as the general population. In particular, I'd like to specifically recognize the association's president, Mr. Howard Goodwin. I want to thank them for being with us today, and on behalf of our own Senate nurse, Senator Kiggins—I see her just above the dais—I would like to ask that you please welcome them to the Capitol and to give them a warm Senate welcome.
I thank the senator. Would President Howard Goodwin and our fellow leaders from the Virginia Association of Nurse Anesthetists please rise to the gallery if you are able? Thank you all so much for joining us here today, and thank you for your tremendous work around the Commonwealth and such an important profession in our healthcare system. We are grateful for your training, your skill, your dedication, and your leadership. You, of course, are welcome back here anytime, and I would ask everybody to please join me and extend the warmest welcome of the Senate to our distinguished guests. Senator from James City County, Senator Norman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise for purposes of an introduction, sir.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
Mr. President, the group that I'd like for you to extend a very warm welcome from the Senate, too, may be in the gallery or they may be sequestered in Senate Room Three as we have a robust attendance today, but I would appreciate if you would extend a very warm welcome to a group of Realtors. The Williamsburg Area Association of Realtors that represent the city of Williamsburg, James City County, New Kent County, and York County. They're a membership of about 500, sir, and they are very strictly adhering to the Code of Ethics for Realtors, and they spend literally hundreds of hours and volunteer each work, donating to the community, and advocating for fair housing. So if you would please extend a very warm welcome to the Williamsburg Area Realtors, wherever they may be, and I ask you to do this on behalf of the senator from Hampton and also the senator from Williamsburg.
I thank the senator. Would our leaders from the Williamsburg Area Realtors Association please rise to the gallery if you are able? Or rise in Senate Room Three if you're watching. Thank you all so much for joining us here today. We're grateful for your tremendous work as Realtors, such an important profession here in the Commonwealth of Virginia. We echo the generous and eloquent words of the senator from James City County, and I would ask everybody to please join me and extend the warmest welcome of the Senate to our distinguished guests. Senator from Hampton, Senator Locke.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise for an introduction.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the senator from Williamsburg and the senator from James City County, I wish to extend the welcome to a group of 50 student leaders from Hampton University who are here for Advocacy Day. During their visit to the Journal Assembly, they will talk to legislators about the Hampton University's Proton Therapy Institute, and they are here with Mr. Bill Thomas, who is the Vice President for Governmental Relations, and their plan today is to follow Reverend Martin Luther King's message regarding health care. That is, of all the forms of inequality, injustice in health is the most shocking and the most inhuman, and Hampton University has been a leader in providing health care services to Virginians. So if you would please extend a warm welcome to the student leaders at Hampton University.
I thank the senator. Would Bill Thomas and our leaders from Hampton University please rise in the gallery if you are able? Thank you all so much for joining us here today. Thank you for your tremendous leadership and your advocacy. Hampton University is an extraordinary institution of higher learning, and the Pirates are represented well in this chamber and all around the world. Of course, senator from Hampton, Senator Locke, a very proud and distinguished professor at your great university. Bill, thank you for your leadership. Thank Dr. Harvey for all that he's done for so many people over the course of many years. We wish you nothing but the best, and I would ask everybody to please join me and extend the warmest welcome of the Senate to our distinguished leaders from Hampton University. Senator from Williamsburg, Senator Mason.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
Mr. President, today we're joined by students and administrators from Virginia Coastal Policy Center. This is a combination of graduate students, law students, VIM students, also the Virginia Sea Grant Program, and they work to focus on topical issues of the day, dealing with sea level rise, flood management, data analytics regarding it, how to reconnect and help and save neighborhoods, how to make people aware that they may be buying a home in it, as well as, Mr. President, something that we're going to hear a lot about coming up around the new wind industry that we're trying to establish in Virginia, aquaculture and fisheries and just opportunities that go along with the study and the advancement of academic success there. So, Mr. President, I hope you and my colleagues, along with the senator from James City County, will extend a warm welcome to our friends from the Virginia Coastal Policy Center.
I thank the senator. Would our friends and leaders from the Virginia Coastal Policy Center please rise to the gallery if you are able? Thank you all so much for joining us here today, and thank you also for your tremendous leadership in one of the most important areas of public policy, dealing with issues around climate change and sea level rise, and we are grateful to you for taking the lead and helping to show us the way to a much more sustainable and brighter future. I echo the generous and eloquent words of your senator from Williamsburg, Senator Mason, and I would ask everybody to please join me and extend the warmest welcome of the Senate to our distinguished guests. Do any other senators wish to be recognized for purposes of an introduction? Is there any other business to come in the morning hour? Seeing none, the clerk will call the calendar.
Senate Calendar for Tuesday, February 4, 2020, uncontested calendar. Senate Bill's on third reading.
Senior senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasselaw.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Senate Bill's on third reading on the uncontested calendar. Pages 1 through 14, Senate Bill 919 through Senate Bill 1070. That's 1-0-7-0. Be placed on their final passage in a block, and any senator desiring to move a bill from the block, please do so after the clerk has read the number of the bill.
Thank the senator. Question is, shall the Senate Bills on the uncontested calendar, third reading, pages 1 through 14, Senate Bill 919 through Senate Bill 1070, be placed upon their final passage in the block? With the understanding that any senator desiring a bill be removed from the block will do so after the clerk has read the number of the bill. All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion is agreed to. The bills are before us in the block. Clerk will read the number of the bills.
Senate Bill 919.
Senior senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could Senate Bill 919 come out of the block for purposes of an abstention?
Without objection, Senate Bill 919 will come out of the block.
Senate Bill 989. Senate Bill 50.
Mr. President.
Senator from King George, Senator Stewart.
Mr. President, could Senate Bill 989 come out of the block? There may be some members who want to vote against that.
Without objection, Senate Bill 989 will come out of the block.
Senate Bill 50. Senate Bill 59. Senate Bill 138. Senate Bill 139. Senate Bill 153. Senate Bill 170. Senate Bill 237. Senate Bill 264. Senate Bill 313. Senate Bill 366. Senate Bill 392. Senate Bill 397. Senate Bill 463. Senate Bill 540. Senate Bill 553. Senate Bill 579. Senate Bill 633. Senate Bill 658. Senate Bill 661. Senate Bill 736. Senate Bill 739. Senate Bill 864. Senate Bill 874. Senate Bill 885. Senate Bill 896. Senate Bill 897. Senate Bill 925. Senate Bill 951. Senate Bill 967. Senate Bill 993. Senate Bill 1044. Senate Bill 1045. Senate Bill 1046. Senate Bill 1066. Senate Bill 1070.
Question is, shall the bills in the block pass? That is, all bills except for Senate Bills 919 and 989. All in favor, the passage of the bills will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
As 40 knows zero.
As 40 knows zero, the bills in the block pass.
Returning to page one, Senate Bill 919.
Senator from Lynchburg, Senator Peake.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Speaking to the bill.
Senator has the floor.
Asking that it pass. Senate Bill 919 provides a sales and use tax exemption for companies expanding broadband and broadband access to its—to the residents of Virginia. And I've spoken to the senior senator from Richmond, and I don't believe she has any questions about the bill. I ask that it pass.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 919? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 919 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
As 39 knows zero, Rule 36-1.
As 39 knows zero, Rule 36-1. Senate Bill 919 passes.
Returning to page two, Senate Bill 989.
Senator from King George, Senator Stewart.
I'd move the bill pass, and speaking to that.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, this adds Spotsylvania County to the list of those that can impose an additional transient occupancy tax. I hope there'll be the pleasure of the body to pass the bill.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 989? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 989— Ready to go? Okay. The question is, shall Senate Bill 989 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
As 7. 7, I'm sorry. As 30— Ayes 31, noes seven.
Ayes 31, noes seven. Senate Bill 919 passes.
We have a slight technical problem up here. I have no computer. Regular calendar, Senate Bill 869, a bill relating to notice by localities.
The senior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator DeStef.
Mr. President, I move the passage of Senate Bill 869.
Senator, speak to the bill.
Speaking to that, Mr. President. This is the bill that basically allows that if a locality had paid a newspaper to advertise in that newspaper to discuss or to announce a public notice, that hearing, I'm sorry, and the newspaper didn't actually print it on time, and again, with enough guidance and everything, they should have printed it on time, but it was a mistake, not of the locality, but of the newspaper, that the newspaper would put it in the next general newspaper that comes out. So if it's a weekly paper, it'd come out the next day. If it's a weekly paper, it'd come out the next week. And they wouldn't have to go and re-advertise and redo the entire process. This is just in Planning District 23, which is Hampton Roads. With that, Mr. President, I move the passage of Senate Bill 869.
Thank the Senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 869? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 869 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 21.
Ayes 19, noes 21. Senate Bill 869 fails.
Senate Bill 246, a bill relating to Department of Motor Vehicles' sex designation.
Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell.
Mr. President, could that bill go by for the day?
Without objection, Senate Bill 246 will go by for the day.
Senate Bill 857, a bill relating to voter registration, public access not required for certain voter registration events.
Senator from Alexandria, Senator Eben.
Mr. President, could that bill go by for the day?
Without objection, Senate Bill 857 will go by for the day.
Senate Bill 1028, a bill relating to additional local sales and use tax in Northampton County, appropriations of Northampton County to incorporated towns for educational purposes.
Senator from AcuMax, Senator Lewis.
Mr. President, here we go again. See if we can get it right this time. Mr. President, first, before I give a brief explanation again of the bill, I want to thank everybody for their courtesies, and I want to thank the Senator from Bedford, as well as the minority leader, for their courtesies in regards to getting this thing hopefully back on track, which reminds me of why, even on a bad day, of which there are many this session, I'm much happier to be here in the Senate. So thanks for those courtesies. This bill, Mr. President, members of the Senate, Senate Bill 1028, extends to Northampton County the same opportunity that we've extended to Halifax County last session, a bill which I supported from Delegate Edmonds. I believe the gentleman from Mecklenburg has one that will be considering later this session, and I think Gloucester County, I think even the minority leader, has put one in that we've passed for Gloucester County this year. The Lord helps those who help themselves, and this is allowing Northampton County to impose a 1% sales tax after a referendum, again, after a referendum, and the proceeds can have to be used exclusively for school infrastructure needs, of which this, one of the most economically challenged counties in the Commonwealth, has many, many dire school infrastructure needs. So with that, I move that the bill pass.
Thank the Senator. For what purpose is the senior senator from Chesapeake, Senator Cosgrove, rise?
Will the gentleman yield for a question?
Will Senator yield?
I yield.
Senator yield, you have the floor.
I'd ask the gentleman, how many votes do you need to pass the bill?
Senator has the floor.
I appreciate the gentleman's inquiry, and I believe it's 27.
Thank the Senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 1028? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 1028 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 32, noes eight.
Ayes 32, noes eight. Senate Bill 1028 passes.
Mr. President.
Senator from Falky, Senator Vogel.
Having voted on the prevailing side by which we failed to pass Senate Bill 869, I would like to respectfully request unanimous consent to reconsider that vote.
Question is, shall the Senate reconsider the vote by which Senate Bill 869 failed? All in favor, the motion will record their vote aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 40, noes zero.
Ayes 40, noes zero. Motion is agreed to. Senior Senator from Virginia Beach, Senator DeStef.
Mr. President, may the bill pass. Speaking to that.
Senators, the floor.
Having previously explained it, I hope we would pass the bill this time, please. Thank you.
Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 869? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 869 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 21, noes 19.
Ayes 21, noes 19.
Page 18, Senate Bill 251, a bill relating to licensure of pharmacy benefits managers.
Senator from Roanoke City, Senator Edwards.
Mr. President, I move that Senate Bill 251 pass, and by way of explanation.
Senators, the floor.
Mr. President, we have all had people complain about the high cost of prescription medication. This bill will help to deal with that problem. It will help to deal with the high cost of prescription medication by licensing pharmacy benefit managers and also outlawing spread pricing, which is one of the culprits. Mr. President, I hope that everybody in the Senate will vote for this bill if they're concerned about the high cost of prescription medication. And by the way, we're also losing a lot of our small pharmacies because of this. So for the small pharmacists, for the small business people, and for our constituents who are paying much too high for the high cost of prescription medication, I would urge everybody to vote for this bill. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank the Senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 251? Question is, shall Senate Bill 251 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 33, noes seven.
Ayes 33, noes seven. Senate Bill 251 passes.
Senate Bill 65, a bill relating to voter identification, repeal of photo identification requirements, additional forms of identification accepted, signed statement in lieu of required form of identification penalty.
Senator from Hampton, Senator Locke.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that Senate Bill 65 pass. And speaking to that.
Senators, the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. A fundamental right like voting should be made available to all eligible voters, not further restricted due to the myriad circumstances that might prevent a voter from having photo ID. Current law requires Virginia voters to provide an acceptable form of photo ID in order to cast a regular ballot. Without acceptable photo ID, voters must cast a provisional ballot. Forcing people to cast a provisional ballot does not guarantee their vote will count, whereas an official ballot would. In order to have their provisional ballot count, the voter must provide their photo ID to the Electoral Board by noon on Friday. This requirement can be burdensome, unrealistic, and in some cases discriminatory. Some voters may not bother to take this extra step if they see the unofficial results and think their vote won't matter. Some voters may have greater difficulty getting to the central location where the local Electoral Board meets to review provisional ballots, for many of these locations are further from where they live and work. Adding other forms of acceptable ID will ensure that more voters will have access to the ballot box. Therefore, Mr. President, I again move that Senate Bill 65 pass.
Thank the Senator. For what purpose, Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshein, rise.
Mr. President, I rise to speak to the bill.
Senators, the floor.
Mr. President, members of the Senate, I have no illusions about what's going to happen with this bill, but I do want to point out a couple of things. You know, we have built our system of elections on principles that we believe in free, open, and fair elections. And this piece of legislation was adopted in order to make sure that we had all three: free, open, and fair. This was a piece of legislation that was adopted, I guess, in 2012, and it furthered that cause. You know, I haven't heard a single example of anybody being denied access to the ballot box as a result of this photo ID legislation. As a matter of fact, there was federal litigation challenging the constitutionality of this statute, alleging that all of these discriminatory practices and discriminatory results were resulting from the adoption of this, yet the plaintiffs challenging the constitutionality couldn't come up with a single voter, not one single voter in the Commonwealth of Virginia who was denied the right to vote as a consequence of having been asked for a photo identification. You know, this is not unconstitutional. It is not discriminatory. It was intended to address a real problem that was recognized by Republicans and Democrats. It was supported by vast majority of Virginians in public opinion polls. Even a majority of Democrats supported this common sense piece of legislation. It has been the thing of political rhetoric over the past four or five years. It is a fictional discriminatory practice. It is not discriminatory in any way. It is pure fiction, and the fairness of our process is going to suffer. So now, maybe we'll have free and open elections, but let's just forget about the fairness.
For what purpose, Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell, rise.
Speaking to the bill.
Senators, the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, this legislation when originally passed was about chasing ghosts, from my point of view. You know, when people want to commit election fraud, they don't do it one vote at a time. They do it as a big group. And the idea that somebody's going to go and fake somebody's ID just to vote is nonsensical. Beyond all that, the reason that this legislation.
I ask the Senator to yield.
Oh, you.
Will Senator yield?
Mr. President, I would ask whether the Senator is familiar with a case just, I don't know, 10, 15 years ago, I guess it was a little longer than that, because it was before I was in the Senate, in which a member of the Senate of Virginia was caught and charged with voting for somebody else.
Senators, the floor.
I'm not familiar with him, but I hope he went to jail and isn't part of this body anymore.
He is not a member of this body, but I would point out to the gentleman that his claim that it never happens is belied by the truth.
Okay, well, I hope he didn't cast a vote in the Yancey race a couple of years ago. In any event, listen, the reason this legislation doesn't, or the existing system doesn't work, is because not everybody has a license or access to photo ID. All right, I emailed the Commissioner of the Department of Motor Vehicles this morning, and I asked him, how many people today are suspended in Virginia? And thanks to Senator Stanley's work and the governor's work, that number's thankfully down. The last time I asked, it was over 800,000. Today, it's down to 333,820 people whose licenses are suspended. What happens when your license is suspended? If you happen to run into police officers, they take it. What happens in the building that I go to work in every day when I'm at home? I see about 100, 200 licenses trading hands from people to the government every day. If you're one of those lucky people that happens to be in court within a week or two or three of when you have to vote, you're not going to have your government ID because somebody's going to be holding it for you. And the idea that somebody's going to go get an ID just so they can vote isn't really realistic. And so a lot of those people don't have their ID because they either got suspended, they broke the law, I get it, but just because you got a reckless driving ticket and had your license taken by a judge doesn't mean you shouldn't be able to vote. Secondly, there's 28 nuns in my district. They live in this monastery up on a hill. They don't even wear shoes every day, and I guarantee you, they don't have photo ID because they just don't drive. They've taken a vow of poverty. You want to disenfranchise nuns? Vote red. Let me tell you two other stories. Let me tell you two other stories. Back when I ran the first time in 2009, I was knocking doors. I ran into this woman named Mildred Downing. Mildred was 96 years old. And she told me she'd vote for me, and I asked her if she needed to ride the polls, and she's like, no, don't need to ride. I was out there working outside Stratford Precinct, shaking hands. Car pulls up. Mildred gets out of the car with her walker and walks up to me and says, I told you I'd vote, and I'm here. You know, Mildred didn't have a driver's license, I'm pretty sure, because she's 96 years old. I don't know many 96-year-olds that have a driver's license, much as anybody that lets them keep them. In that same election, number four, I was knocking doors right next to my high school, West Potomac High School. And I was looking at my voter files, talking to this man. He was 83 years old. I was having a conversation with him. He committed to vote for me, and I looked at the sheet, and it said on my sheet. I looked at him, and I said, my voter sheet here says that there's a person in this house who's 105 years old. He's like, hey, that's my mom, Maddie Lou. She's sitting right there. And there was a woman sitting in this chair, 105 years old, Maddie Lou Ware, and I asked her, you know, I asked her if I could have her vote, and she nodded and said, yeah. And it turned out that she had registered to vote because she wanted to vote for President Obama. She'd gotten out of the House, gotten out of register, and made the effort to vote. But I guarantee you, this 105-year-old woman did not have a driver's license and probably didn't have photo ID. So, you know, there it is. If you want to disenfranchise people that just have the bad luck to go to court, if you want to disenfranchise nuns, you want to disenfranchise 90-year-olds, 100-year-olds, vote red, be my guest. But this bill will allow everybody in Virginia to vote, because if you're a citizen, you make it to 100 years old, you ought to be able to vote, and I think we ought to vote this through.
For what purpose, Senator from Western Fairfax, Senator Marsen, rise.
Thank you, Mr. President. Speak briefly to the bill.
Senators, the floor.
If my memory serves me correctly, and maybe it doesn't, but I remember Governor McDonnell spending $3.5 million sending out voter ID cards to everybody, and then we turned around and did voter photo ID. So I guess whatever purpose he had in mind didn't work out, and we had to turn around and do something else, but I guess we wasted $3.5 million to do that, and that's kind of curious, Mr. President. Thank you.
For what purpose, the senior senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw, rise.
Speak briefly to the bill.
Senators, the floor.
I suspect I've been through a lot more elections than anybody here in this room, but there was never, until this was passed, 2012, there were never any allegations that I can remember ever in any of the newspapers about voter fraud. It was simply not needed. And, you know, simply because one Republican state senator in the '90s decided to go vote for somebody else, you know, don't blame all of society on that. We need to take this off the books. We didn't need it then, we don't need it now.
Any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 65? Senator from Hampton, Senator Locke. For what purpose, Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshein, rise.
I'm happy to yield, but I thought maybe the gentlelady from Hampton would like to close. I understand.
Okay, okay, she will close. You have the floor.
Just point out a couple of things. Number one, it was Democratic state senator. It was not. It was not. And I'm glad he's not alive to hear that, because that would maybe be defamatory, but I don't know. Second of all, I'm not worried about the 95-year-old nun, nuns. I don't know, but it just seems to me that, as I recall, we just passed anytime absentee voting, and there is no impediment to anybody casting a vote by absentee, should they wish to do so, should they have no photo identification. And I further don't know about what the senator. And I further don't know about what the Senator, Senior Senator from Fairfax, his daily reading is, but every newspaper I read had articles over the course of the past decade about voter fraud and about photo identification. You know, there was difference of opinion, but don't let anybody kid you that there was never any example of voter fraud by individuals showing up and fraudulently casting their votes. This was a common sense measure, and notwithstanding the theoretical hypothetical examples that were given, fact remains that to this day, I haven't heard on the floor, or I haven't heard through the newspapers, I didn't hear through the federal litigation, of one single person who was denied the right to vote as a consequence of this common sense legislation. Please vote no.
For what purpose, Senator from Franklin County? Senator Stanley rise.
Thank you, Mr. President. Speak to the bill.
Senator, it's the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I'm listening to this conversation, and of course, part of these bills, I was here in 2012 when it was passed, but part of these bills always seems to involve voter suppression, and you're keeping people from having the ability to vote. And so, I looked up at the turnouts that we had, and even the number of registered voters in Virginia. When this bill passed in 2012, we had 5 million, 5.4 million voters. In that election, which elected Barack Obama, was 3.8 million. Move forward to 2016, we had increased our numbers in registered voters by over 100,000 to 5.5 million. Actually, it was an increase of 6.4%, and the votes were 120,000 more than they were four years before in a presidential election. 72% turnout. And then, I'm looking at even 2017, 2018. Now, we have, at least in 2018, 2019, 5.7 million registered voters in Virginia. In 2018, 3.3 million in an off-year election, 59% voted. Now, think of it this way. If voter ID was so bad, Mr. President, where's the voter suppression? Why aren't the turnouts lower? How are we having something that protects us from voter fraud turning out to be so bad when we're seeing more people register and more people going to the polls? Some things just work. And when they work, we let them alone. You and I all go to the polls every year, and you walk in, and you give them your ID, and they scan the back of it. Not only is it the right thing to do to protect our elections, but also, it's highly efficient for our registrars and for the State Board of Elections to keep this kind of data that I just read to you. But I don't see less people voting. I don't see any change in the absentee numbers. In fact, those have gone up. In fact, I don't even see the provisional numbers changing. So, I changed this law. It's a good law. Let's leave it be. Thank you, Mr. President.
For what purpose, Senator from Arlington? Senator Favola rise.
I'm speaking to the bill, Mr. President.
Senator, it's the floor.
Well, I just want to note, and I do respect the Senator from Franklin County, but we don't know how many people actually never showed up at the polls because of the requirement for this photo ID. We should be as welcoming as possible when we're talking about holding elections. Overall, the United States has the lowest voter turnout of all the industrialized countries in the world. We just don't vote here, and we need to pass policies that encourage more voting. Institutions of higher learning have studied voter fraud. The Brennan Institute of Justice, I think it's associated with NYU, studied voter fraud, and it was less than 3/10 of 1%. The current law passed, and it was a solution looking for a problem. It is high time that we overturn the law and pass the proposal before us that Senator Locke has put forward in a thoughtful way. I think it's time, and I ask the body to pass this bill. Thank you.
For what purposes, the Junior Senator from Virginia Beach? Senator Kiggins rise.
Mr. President, I rise to speak to the bill.
Senator, it's the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm relatively new here, so maybe I just didn't catch some of the obvious things. But I use my photo ID multiple times a day. I use it frequently when I'm using my credit card, if I have to buy alcohol, cigarettes, open a bank account, even apply for things like food stamps, welfare, Medicaid. So, if you don't have an ID card, there are ways to get ID cards that are available to any and all of our citizens. As far as being discriminatory, some of the things that, like these applications for lower-income services, the food stamps, the welfare, I can't get in this building without an ID, I can't rent a hotel room without an ID. I need an ID for so many other reasons besides voting, that it would behoove everyone to get a photo ID. You know, there's nothing more sacred in our country than the fair elections that we've talked about. In my mind, I wanted the best person to win my election. I wanted every vote to be counted. I wanted every vote to be fair, to be a registered person. We cannot put that at risk, where that's what we hold most valuable in our country, in our democracy, where we elect our leaders on a very fair, unregimented system. So, I have a lot of issues with this bill. I do not think that it discriminates or does not allow for everyone and all of us to vote, and I respectfully ask that you vote against this bill.
For what purpose, Senator from Alexandria? Senator Eben rise.
Mr. President, very briefly.
Senator, it's the floor.
In response to the Junior Senator from Virginia Beach's remarks, I don't know what it's like to be African-American. I don't know what it's like to be African-American and be born in a hospital in Virginia before people were allowed to be born or turned away, not having a birth certificate, which in turn leads to you getting an ID. Further, I don't know what it's like to live in a nursing home, where your need for a utility bill or a driver's license, as was said, or anything else is needed on a daily basis. So, while we may have photo IDs that are used on a daily basis, there are plenty of people who don't, and I don't want to make it hard for them to vote. So, with that, I hope that we do pass the bill.
Do any other Senators wish to be heard for the first time on this bill? Senior Senator from Fairfax? Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, I reference to the remarks you made by the Senator from Franklin with respect to the dramatic increase in voters over the last three or four years. The only thing I can say to that is, unless you just arrived here from Mars, everybody in this room knows what has caused that dramatic jump in voters. Who are we kidding? And it sure wasn't this previous law that I hope that we get rid of today.
Senator from Hampton? Senator Locke.
Thank you, Mr. President. I renew my motion to pass Senate Bill 65.
Senator, it's the floor.
I do know what it's like to be an African-American, and I certainly know what it's like to be under voting laws that repress the vote. When I registered to vote, I had to register under dual registration, which was designed to repress my vote as an African-American. So, and I know why this bill was passed, when it was passed in 2012. I know why it was passed, and there was a lag period for it to go into effect, because Shelby v. Holder was going before the Supreme Court. So, it went into effect immediately following the Supreme Court's ruling in Shelby v. Holder, which gutted... No, I'm not yielding.
Senator will not yield. Senator, it's the floor.
It went into effect immediately following that Supreme Court ruling, which gutted the Voting Rights Act, which then said that states that were under the Voting Rights Act did not have to go to the Justice Department any longer to have their voting laws approved by the Justice Department. So, what immediately goes into effect? Photo identification laws, passed by Virginia. For nonexistent or limited fraud, and I have to correct my colleague from Arlington, it was less than 1/10 of 1%. Less than 1/10 of 1%. Any fraud is bad, yes. But we're going to pass a repressive photo identification law? But we know what it was for, and we know why, Mr. President. So, I went and looked up from the Heritage Foundation, certainly not a bastion of liberalism in its research, to see how many cases that had voter fraud in Virginia that we've had since 2007, where there had been a conviction on voter fraud. Since 2007, there have been 17 convictions of voter fraud in Virginia. So, we certainly have all of this rampant voter fraud going on in Virginia, so we certainly need photo ID to prevent that from happening. What I would like to see, Mr. President, is more people voting in Virginia, not less. You know, I've heard, you know, we've had all these people turning out since, you know, 2008, 2012, all of these people turning out. Why don't we want more, rather than putting in place, in front of people, obstacles to voting, like this law? So, I again move passage of Senate Bill 65.
Mr. President, I would ask if the gentle lady from Hampton would yield for a question.
Will the Senator yield? Senator will not yield.
My question would have been, since she raised questions about the motives behind the passage, as the Senator who proposed this bill, what she suspects was my motive that she seeks to indict. But since she will not yield, I will not put her on the spot to ask her what she is accusing me of.
Do any other Senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 65? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 65 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the Senators ready to vote? Have all the Senators voted? Do any Senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 21, no's 19.
Ayes 21, no's 19. Senate Bill 65 passes.
Senate Bill 28, a bill relating to eminent domain cost.
Senator from Fairfax City? Senator Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the bill pass and speak to the motion.
Senator, it's the floor.
Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the Senate, my only motivation is to level the playing field for this bill, and let me talk a little bit about it. The way condemnation works right now is there is an offer made on your land before it is taken. And if you represent the landowner, or you are the landowner, you represent yourself, and you're dissatisfied with that offer, you can then litigate the amount that was offered, and you can go to court, have a jury of your peers, and if you recover more than what was offered, one of the benefits that you get under the statute is you can get your fees recovered. Not your attorney's fees, but rather, if you had to pay an expert witness to come in and value the land, you can have that money reimbursed. And that was a very good law we passed several years ago, but you're going to be shocked to hear this, we made an exception for public service corporations. I know you're shocked. So, suspend that shock, because this bill takes away that exemption. However, however, we do keep the exemption for takes under $10,000, and the reason for that, those are what we call linear takes. They tend to be much more de minimis, and so, all things being equal, we'd rather have people settle those out than litigate them. So, in the spirit of compromise, which is pervading this legislature, I'm kidding, but in the spirit of compromise, I do think it makes sense to keep that $10,000 threshold. So, that's the bill we have in front of you. I'm not sure why I had any no votes, but apparently, there was an opposing viewpoint. Otherwise, I think this is a great bill, and I ask you to vote for it. Thank you.
Thank the Senator. Do any other Senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 28? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 28 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the Senators ready to vote? Have all the Senators voted? Do any Senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 40, no's zero.
Ayes 40, no's zero. Senate Bill 28 passes.
Senate Bill 140, a bill relating to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, public institutions of higher education, information related to pledges and donations.
Senator from King George? Senator Stewart?
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the bill pass and speaking to it.
Thank the Senator. You have the floor.
Mr. President, Senate Bill 140 deals with exclusions under the Freedom of Information Act, and particularly, it has to do with donations to universities. And it does not allow for an exemption under FOIA unless the donor has requested anonymity, and there are no strings attached to that donation, i.e., there are no demands with regard to how that money's going to be spent or specific academic decision-making. It was run through the FOIA Council and unanimously recommended, and I'd ask you all to support it.
Thank the Senator. Do any other Senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 140? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 140 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the Senators ready to vote? Have all the Senators voted? Do any Senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 38, no's two.
Ayes 38, no's two. Senate Bill 140 passes.
Senate Bill 171, a bill relating to school resource officers and school security officers' training standards.
Senator from Hampton? Senator Locke?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that Senate Bill 171 pass and speaking to that.
Thank the Senator. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. While school resource officers now by law must all be trained, certified, and recertified through DCJS, that training does not require specific relevant topics that cover critical aspects of student interaction, especially with students with disabilities, students of color, students with trauma experiences, and students with mental health needs. What Senate Bill 171 will do is ensure that specific training topics will be covered in that training. Again, I move a passage.
Thank the Senator. Do any other Senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 171? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 171 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the Senators ready to vote? Have all the Senators voted? Do any Senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 37, no's two.
Ayes 37, no's two. Senate Bill 171 passes.
Senate Bill 208, a bill relating to mechanics liens right to withhold payment.
Senator from Fairfax City? Senator Peterson.
I move that the bill pass and speak to the bill.
Senator, it's the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a bill, Senate Bill 208, an important bill for the small business community, especially in the construction trades. It really, it has two purposes. The first is what I call the direct right of action. If you're a subcontractor and you're not being paid by the general contractor, you can't put a mechanic's lien on the property if the owner has paid that amount that he owes to the general contractor. And of course, you wouldn't have a direct cause of action against the owner himself. This allows you a direct cause of action against the general contractor, who effectively has taken your money and spent it on somebody else or someplace else. So, it allows you a direct cause of action, first of all. Secondly, and this is frankly the more heart of the bill, a lot of general contractors and small subcontractors do business in various projects and across the United States, and what often happens is that a general contractor will withhold payment on a separate project, even if it's undisputed that the work has been done on the primary project. So, this basically takes away that what's called the right of offset, but requires the subcontractors to be paid for the work they've actually done. And obviously, if there's a separate dispute, that can be handled separately. This is an important bill. I know it's not gotten a lot of attention like other bills, but I'm telling you, for the small business community, the subcontracting community, a lot of their representatives came down to testify in favor, and we had a very robust hearing in our committee, and I hope you all will pass the bill. Thank you.
Thank the Senator. Do any other Senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 208? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 208 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the Senators ready to vote? Have all the Senators voted? Do any Senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 40, no's zero.
Ayes 40, no's zero. Senate Bill 208 passes.
Senate Bill 270, a bill relating to practice of pharmacy compounding regulation by Board of Pharmacy.
Senator from Loudoun? Senator Bell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to pass this bill and speak to the motion.
Senator, it's the floor.
Mr. President, this is a fairly simple bill. It just opens up several items for disclosure via FOIA, and also provides better reporting to the department each year. This would, via the pharmacy board, making sure that any compounding pharmacies who had violations would be on that report, would help us with procurement. Renew my motion for passage of the bill.
Thank the Senator. Do any other Senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 270? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 270... Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 270 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 22, knows 18.
Ayes, 22, knows 18. Senate Bill 270 passes.
Senate Bill 294, a bill relating to bail bondsman, petition for return of deposit for surrender of principal deposit funds credited to literary fund.
Senator from Western Fairfax, Senator Marsden.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the bill pass and speaking to the measure.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you. During the 2019 session of the General Assembly, this code section was amended to require a bail bondsman to deposit funds with the clerk or magistrate upon requesting assurances capias, except when the court has issued a summons to show cause. Further, the bail bondsman is to petition the court for the return of the deposited funds within 15 days from the bondsman's surrender of the principal. Upon implementation, it was noted by clerks that the changes in 2019 did not specify how the deposited funds are to be disposed of if the bail bondsman does not petition the court within the required 15 days, thereby creating a potential audit problem for the clerks. This bill specifies that such unclaimed funds are to be paid by the clerk into the literary fund under those circumstances, and I reiterate my motion to pass the bill.
What purpose is the junior senator from Richmond City, Senator Morrissey, rise?
Mr. Speaker, would the patron yield for a question?
Will the senator yield? I yield. Senator yields, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask Senator Marsden, why would the clerk of the respective court not just mail a check to the bondsman for the overage that was paid, instead of going through the machinations of sending it to the literary fund?
Floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would answer the gentleman that the code provides that the bail bondsmen must petition for the return of the funds. I agree with the gentleman that that could certainly be something that could be done, but that's a bill for another day, and this bill says, or this code section says that they must petition, and apparently, they aren't, and we can't send out reminder notices on every law in the Commonwealth's books to remind people to comply with them.
I thank the senator.
Senator, do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 294? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 294 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 20, knows 20.
Ayes, 20, knows 20. Chair votes no. Bill fails.
Senate Bill 406, a bill relating to Environmental Justice Agency Regulations Working Group.
The junior senator from Chesterfield, Senator Hashmi.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move passage of the bill and speaking to the motion.
Senator has the floor.
SB 406 seeks to establish the Virginia Environmental Justice Act, and this bill in particular requires that our governor's secretariats create agency-specific environmental justice strategies. It requires agencies to consider environmental justice as a prerequisite for taking agency action. It also adds the opportunity for public participation for those residents who are going to be potentially impacted by any agency action. It also asks that state agencies review their environmental justice policy every five years and update as needed. And then finally, the bill also establishes an inter-agency environmental justice working group to help to coordinate all of these efforts across the administration. I move passage of the bill.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 406? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 406 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 25, knows 15.
Ayes, 25, knows 15. Senate Bill 406 passes.
Mr. President.
Senator from Fairfax City, Senator Peterson.
Rise for request.
Senator has the floor.
Having voted on the prevailing side by which we defeated Senate Bill 294, I move that we reconsider that vote.
Question is, shall the vote by which Senate Bill 294 failed be reconsidered? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 40, knows zero.
Ayes, 40, knows zero. The motion is agreed to. Senator from Western Fairfax, Senator Marsden.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could that bill go by for the day?
Without objection. Senate Bill 294 will go by for the day.
Mr. President.
Senator from Hampton, Senator Locke.
Mr. President, having voted on the prevailing side by which Senate Bill 65 passed, I ask that we reconsider the vote so that a member can vote.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the vote by which Senate Bill 65 passed be reconsidered? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 40, knows zero.
Ayes, 40, knows zero. The motion is agreed to. Senator from Hampton, Senator Locke.
Mr. President, I move that Senate Bill 65 pass.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall Senate Bill 65 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 21, knows 19.
Ayes, 21, knows 19. Senate Bill 65 passes. Senator from James City County, Senator Norman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Having voted on the prevailing side by which Senate Bill 270 on page 21 of the calendar passed, I'd ask that we reconsider that vote.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the vote by which Senate Bill 270 passed be reconsidered? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 40, knows zero.
Ayes, 40, knows zero. The motion is agreed to. Senator from Loudoun, Senator Bell.
Mr. President, I move to pass this bill.
Thank the senator. Senator from James City County, Senator Norman. Question is, shall Senate Bill 270 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 21, knows 19.
Ayes, 21, knows 19. Senate Bill 270 passes.
Mr. President.
Senator from Hampton, Senator Locke.
I think I have the right one now. Mr. President, having voted on the prevailing side by which Senate Bill 171 passed, I ask that we reconsider the vote.
This is on page 20.
Page 20.
Question is, shall the vote by which Senate Bill 171 pass be reconsidered? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 40, knows zero.
Ayes, 40, knows zero. The motion is agreed to. Senator from Hampton, Senator Locke.
Thank you, Mr. President. Having previously been explained, I ask that Senate Bill 171 pass.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall Senate Bill 171 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 39, knows one.
Ayes, 39, knows one. Senate Bill 171 passes.
Page 22, Senate Bill 420, a bill relating to public school seizure management and action plan and training.
Senior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator De Staff.
Mr. President, Senate Bill 420 passed. Speaking to that.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, what Senate Bill 420 does is it provides that the submission of the utilization of a seizure management plan for students with seizure disorders. The bill requires that school nurses and certain school division employees who have to have contact with the individuals with seizures, complete an online course of instruction regarding treating students with seizure disorders. The bill also provides immunity from civil liability for acts or omissions related to providing for the care of students under the seizure management plan. Mr. President, we had the individuals from the Uplupsy Foundation in the gallery, I want to say it was the end of last week, and they've been here testifying on this bill and have done a fantastic job with that. With that, Mr. President, I move Senate Bill 420 pass.
Mr. President.
What purpose, Senator from Roanoke County, Senator Suterline, rise.
Well, the senior senator from Virginia Beach yield for a question.
Will Senator yield?
Mr. President, happily.
Senator yields, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. With the electric system presenting a different bill, my question is now answered. Is it correct that your bill's Senate Bill 420 on page 22?
That's correct, Mr. President.
I now know.
Senate Bill 420 on page 22.
I can find it. Appreciate you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 420? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 420 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 38, knows two.
Ayes, 38, knows two. Senate Bill 420 passes.
Senate Bill 422, a bill relating to health regulatory boards.
Senator from Fairfax City, Senator Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the bill pass, speak to the bill.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, this is a very simple bill. It just simply has to do with defining the word license, which is used in various capacities to include when, if applicable, an out-of-state license of being used by a practitioner. Again, it's a fairly generic definition bill, and that's really all there is to it. Thank you.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 422? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 422 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 40, knows zero.
Ayes, 40, knows zero. Senate Bill 422 passes.
Senate Bill 429, a bill relating to withholding of income for child support independent contractors.
Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill pass. Speaking to my motion.
Senator has the floor.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a bill that you all heard last year. It passed out of this body, but it was a little bit, a little bit different this year than last year. But the bill basically says that we can withhold child support payments from independent contractors. Right now, if you want to do a wage withholding, that is, if you want the employer to withhold child support and send it directly to the recipient, that can only be done by statute if you're a W-2 employee. This broadens it to independent contractors, because a lot more people are evading their child support obligations by switching over to these 1099 gig jobs like Uber or Lyft, or just working as 1099 employees. Similar legislation has been passed in about, I think, about 15 states now, including Texas and a few others, New York. But right now in Virginia, we have $2.3 billion in unpaid child support. Just think about that number for a second, $2.3 billion. And when that child support doesn't get paid, we end up paying for it, because the state advances it under TANF and then has to collect it back. So we need to, we need to get this child support collected, and I would hope the bill would pass.
Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 429? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 429 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 27, knows 13.
Ayes, 27, knows 13. Senate Bill 429 passes.
Senate Bill 492, a bill relating to sex offenses requiring registration.
Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill pass and speaking to the motion.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill makes two slight changes to our sex offender registration rules. The first one's a little more complicated. So about two years ago, I think it was Delegate Freedus over in the other body, got us to pass the law, which basically said, any out-of-state sex offense, no matter what it is, if you're convicted out of state, has to be treated as a sexually violent offense in Virginia, no matter what the offense was. There's two different, if you're violent, if you're, if you're on the violent list, you have to register every 90 days. If you're on the nonviolent sex offender registry, you have to register every 90. So some guy came into Virginia, and he was on the out-of-state, he was convicted out of state of something which was one of the lesser sex offenses. But when he came to Virginia, they, they charged him with not registering every 90 days, as if it was a violent offense. He appealed to the Supreme Court. Supreme Court wrote an opinion which said, this is totally stupid, but it's what the law says, so we have to affirm his conviction. And so basically, what the law says, right, the changes you're going to vote on today basically says that if your offense out of state is the same as a sexually violent offense in state, it's treated as a sexually violent offense, or if you're treated as a violent offense out of state, you will be treated as a violent offense in state. But we're not going to treat every offense from out of state as a violent offense in state. So that's what it does, to make it consistent with the intent of what they're convicted of out of state. The second thing that this bill does is it says that if you are convicted of two nonviolent sex offenses, you are allowed to petition to have, to come off the list if you are at liberty between the two offenses. Right now, if a prosecutor loads you up and makes you plead guilty of two offenses arising out of the same incident, even two nonviolent sex offenses, you're not allowed to petition to come off the list. And that's kind of an absurd situation. In most other situations, we require you to be at liberty between the two convictions, instead of being convicted of two offenses arising from the same date. Those are the two changes it makes. From my perspective, not a big deal. I don't believe anybody opposed the bill as it came through, and I would hope we pass it.
Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 492? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 492 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 22, knows 18.
Ayes, 22, knows 18. Senate Bill 492 passes.
Senate Bill 645, a bill relating to local arbitration agreements.
Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill pass and speaking to that motion.
Senator has the floor.
So ladies and gentlemen, this bill has to do with arbitration. The bill's designed to make government contracts more efficient with better information. Arbitration basically creates a culture of secrecy. From my perspective, a lot of times, companies that have arbitration disputes, they're able to, or require arbitration for disputes, they're able to hide poor service records and poor employee treatment. And right now, local governments often don't ask about arbitration in connection with the procurements. The bill is drafted, creates a structure whereby local governments can ask about arbitration
practices for different contractors so they can get that information before they make their procurement decision. The bill is drafted right now, says every local government shall do this. I've been working with VACO over the last three days and working with them and the advocates I'm working on with this. I'm going to change it to May on the other side when we get to the House, which, to my understanding, takes care of any opposition to this bill. The contractors, including transportation contractors, are already out of the bill on line 73 and 74. And so the bill is drafted, and as the amendment's going to get made on the other side, basically creates a discretionary structure for local governments to follow to get information about arbitration so that they don't enter these contracts that have these horrible arbitration clauses that hide information. I would move that the bill pass.
Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 645? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 645 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes twenty-one, noes nineteen.
Ayes twenty-one, noes nineteen. Senate Bill 645 passes.
Senate Bill 693, a bill relating to common law defense of intra-family immunity abolished in certain cases.
Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane.
Mr. President, I move the passage of the bill. And speaking to this, this bill deals with an antiquated doctrine called intra-family immunity, which basically provides that one parent can't sue another parent for an injury or death of a child. And we've already, in Virginia, adopted an exemption or an exception to that for cases involving motor vehicle accidents. So if a child dies in a motor vehicle accident, one parent, perhaps a noncustodial parent, could sue the custodial parent, or vice versa, who was the driver of that vehicle in connection with the death of the child. What this bill does is it repeals the doctrine with respect to a very narrow set of additional cases. We've already created the exception for auto cases. This basically provides that in all wrongful death cases, that the doctrine will not apply. It would pertain to, for example, unmarried parents. They have a child. One parent takes a child during the day, takes a child to a swimming pool. Parent with the child is not paying attention, neglects the child, child drowns. Right now, under Virginia law, the custodial parent would have no recourse, no remedy against that parent. This would allow that other parent to be able to sue. And in practical terms, it's not going to have any impact unless there's insurance that's available. This is a very narrow repeal of the doctrine, and I would ask, and to the best of my knowledge, there was no objection. This was crafted in conjunction with the Trial Lawyers Association, but the insurance companies were there at the hearing and expressed no opposition to this bill.
For what purposes, the junior senator from Richmond City, Senator Morrissey Rice.
Mr. President, would the senator yield for a question?
Will Senator yield?
I yield.
Senator Yield, you have the floor.
I understand the narrow nature of this bill, but even if the couple were a loving couple, married, and they were not separated or otherwise divorced, this exception would still allow one spouse to sue the other, correct?
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, I would say yes, it would. And the senator from Richmond, being an experienced attorney, understands that in a wrongful death action, the fact finder, the jury, or the judge has the ability to allocate an award and to make an award to the suing parent without making any award to the parent whose negligence was responsible for the death. And the fact finder, the jury, or the judge could take it into account that they are a loving couple, a family, and decide that this is just a profound loss that one member of the family was responsible for and factor that into the judgment, one way or the other. It puts more power in the hands of the fact finder.
I thank the senator, Mr. President.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 693? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 693 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes forty, noes zero.
Ayes forty, noes zero. Senate Bill 693 passes.
Senate Bill 697, a bill relating to execution of wills witnesses.
Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane.
Mr. President, I would move that this bill be recommitted to the Committee on the Courts of Justice, the Committee and the Judiciary. And speaking to that motion...
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, this bill deals with the issue of financial exploitation, elder abuse. It is a bill that is intended to prevent somebody who has a financial interest in a will from signing it as a witness because of the blatant conflict of interest. I've been in discussions with the Virginia Bar Association, wills, trusts, and estates section. They understand the purpose of this. They have some technical concerns about its implementation and the effect on out-of-state wills that I fear. It's just going to take a little bit longer than we have to get this right. I think that we're committed to working together on this, and the extra... It is not my intention to ask this to be heard again this year. The extra year, I think, will give us the time to work out any of the technical issues. So with that, I move that the bill be recommitted.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall Senate Bill 697 be recommitted to the Committee on the Judiciary? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the bill is recommitted.
Senate Bill 700, a bill relating to indexing of wills.
Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane.
Mr. President, I move the passage of this bill.
Senator has the floor.
This bill is much in the same vein as the previous bill. We have a compelling need to protect our seniors from financial exploitation. Senator from Prince William has worked hard to pursue that goal, as have many other members. In the context of wills, trusts, and estates, there is an unfortunate situation that arises in which people do take advantage of our elders, our senior citizens, caretakers. Most frequently would be the category of folks who might fall into this category and may take advantage and procure a will. And right now, if somebody has been caretaker to four or five people and wound up being named as primary beneficiary and executor of the estate for four or five people that they have taken care of in their community, and wound up being named as the executor, there is no index for the executors. So you have no way of going back and looking in the records of the clerk's office to determine whether this person has qualified for five or six or seven different estates as executor. It does not eliminate indexing in any other way. The testator, the maker of the will continues to be indexed. It simply requires the clerk's office to keep an additional data point for indexing for law enforcement or for family members who have suspicions, just to look, to see whether there is some pattern. And this came to me through the clerk of our circuit court in Rockingham County. So with that, I would move its passage.
Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 700? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 700 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes thirty-nine, noes one.
Ayes thirty-nine, noes one. Senate Bill 700 passes.
Senate Bill 708, a bill relating to housing authorities' notice of intent to demolish, liquidate, or otherwise dispose of housing projects.
Senior senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that Senate Bill 708 pass and speaking to the bill.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you. Senate Bill 708 requires any public housing authority, when it submits an application to HUD, to demolish, liquidate, or otherwise dispose of a housing project, to provide the tenants of that project with such notice at least nine months in advance. This is to give those tenants time to work through finding somewhere else to live, and I hope it'd be a pleasure of the Senate to pass the bill.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 708? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 708 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes forty, noes zero.
Ayes forty, noes zero. Senate Bill 708 passes.
Senate Bill 713, a bill relating to Board of Counseling, Liscensure of Art Therapists and Art Therapy Associates.
Senior senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill pass and speaking to the bill.
Senator, you have the floor.
Senate Bill 713 establishes requirements for licensure as a professional art therapist. This is after a 2018 study completed by the Board of Health Professions, looking at the need to regulate art therapists, and they approved this bill. I hope it'd be the pleasure of the Senate to pass it.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 713? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 713 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes thirty-nine, noes zero.
Ayes thirty-nine, noes zero. Senate Bill 713 passes.
Senate Bill 845, a bill relating to school buildings mold testing.
Senator from Alexandria, Senator Ebbin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Speaking to the bill.
Senator, you have the floor.
This bill requires that school boards develop a plan to test for mold. If mold is found, to notify parents and students and remediate the mold. I move the passage of the bill.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 845? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 845 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes thirty-eight, noes one.
Ayes thirty-eight, noes one. Senate Bill 845 passes.
Senate Bill 920, a bill relating to surrogacy contracts provisions requiring or prohibiting abortion or selective reductions unenforceable.
Senator from Lynchburg, Senator Pete.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the bill pass and speaking to the bill.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the Senate. This is a... To get this straight, this is not an anti-abortion bill. This is a pro-choice, pro-woman bill. These surrogacy contracts, frequently what I would call in the law, contracts of adhesion, where one party has a lot more power than the other. This bill does not require... It says that the contract for surrogacy cannot require or prohibit an abortion. And where this frequently comes up in these surrogacy situations, you'll have a couple, oftentimes two males who cannot have children, will hire a surrogate to carry the baby for them. Sometimes up to three or four embryos will be placed in the surrogate, and these contracts will say that, based on what the people who are paying say, the surrogate mother may have to selectively reduce or abort a certain number of the children. And the contract can contain that. They could do it for the sex of the baby, if they find a deformity of the baby, or if there are more babies than they want to have. In the case of it's three or so, they might have them reduced down to two or one. What this bill does is it makes sure that that provision will not be in the contract so that the choice remains with the pregnant mother. And that is all that it does. And it also prohibits the contract from saying that you cannot have an abortion. So that language was added. So the contract can say, cannot say, you cannot have an abortion in any situation, or you can't have an abortion. It leaves it completely up to the mother who is carrying the child. And that is the sole purpose of this. And one of the parts of it where it may arise is in the situation of a contract. If the mother refuses to reduce from three to two, or two to one, or terminate the pregnancy if it turns out that the baby has deficiencies, then the controlling party, the person in power, may say you breached that contract and not pay her and not pay for her medical bills, which would be a part of the contract. So all this bill does is it leaves the law like it is currently. It just says that we shall not have any contracts that mandate one way or another, that someone can tell someone else whether or not they have to have an abortion or cannot have an abortion. And so I would ask that the bill pass.
Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 920? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 920 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes forty, noes zero.
Ayes forty, noes zero. Senate Bill 920 passes.
Senate Bill 926, a bill relating to fingerprints and photographs by police authorities reports to the Central Criminal Records Exchange.
Senator from Lynchburg, Senator Pete.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Speaking to the... I move that the bill pass and speaking to the bill.
Senator has the floor.
Yes, this bill is from... I'm just so shocked that the other bill passed forty to oh. I was... Excuse me. But we'll talk about this one. This is a cleanup bill from the Crime Commission. It deals with fingerprinting, and it came out with just two no votes. And so it really is a cleanup from last year, unanimous recommendation from the Crime Commission, and I ask that the bill pass.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 926? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 926 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes thirty-nine, noes one.
Ayes thirty-nine, noes one. Senate Bill 926 passes.
Uncontested calendar, Senate Bills on second reading.
Senior senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, I move that all Senate Bills on second reading on the uncontested calendar on pages 27 through 40, that's Senate Bills 385 through 1073. The advances their engrossment in third reading in a block after the adoption of any amendments thereto. And any senator desiring to move a bill from this block, please do so after the clerk has read the number of the bill.
Thank the senator. Question is, shall all Senate Bills on second reading on the uncontested calendar on pages 27 through 40, Senate Bill 385 through Senate Bill 1073, be engrossed in advance through their third reading in the block after the adoption of any amendments thereto? And that any senator desiring a bill be removed from the block will do so after the clerk has read the number of the bill. All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion is agreed to. The clerk will read the number of the bills.
Senate Bill 385, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology with the substitute, and there are three floor amendments.
Senator from Prince William, Senator McPike.
Mr. President, I move that the substitute be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the committee substitute is agreed to. Senator from Prince William, Senator McPike.
Mr. President, I move that we waive the reading of the floor amendments.
Question is, shall the reading of the floor amendments be waived? All in favor, the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the reading of the floor amendments are waived. Senator from Prince William, Senator McPike.
Mr. President, I move we adopt the floor amendments and speaking to the motion.
Senator has the floor.
This is simply clarification of the request by both the partners that are working with the State Corporation Commission, just to clarify within the substitute, the sequence of which the regulations will be taken up, as well as delayed enactment clause requested by the stakeholders group involved. And so with that explanation, move the adoption of the floor amendments in a block.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the floor amendments be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the floor amendments are adopted.
Senate Bill 77, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations with the substitute.
Senator from Northern Fairfax, Senator Howe.
I move the substitute be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the committee substitute is agreed to.
Senate Bill 109, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations. Senate Bill 209, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations. Senate Bill 213, reported from the Committee on Rules. Senate Bill 277, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations with amendments.
Senator from Southern Fairfax, Senator Barker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the amendments be adopted.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendments be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the committee amendments are adopted.
Senate Bill 290, reported from the Committee on Transportation with amendment.
Senator from Bath, Senator De.
Mr. President, I move that the amendment be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendment be agreed to? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the committee amendment is agreed to.
Senate Bill 364, reported from the Committee on Rules with the substitute.
Senator from Henrico, Senator Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the substitute be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the committee substitute is agreed to.
Senate Bill 400, reported from the Committee on Rules. Senate Bill 441, reported from the Committee on Rehabilitation and Social Services with amendments.
Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell.
Not in the seat. Sorry, drinking wine in the corner. I move the committee amendments.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendments be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendments are adopted.
Senate Bill 527, reported from the Committee on Transportation. Senate Bill 590, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations with a substitute.
Senator from Augusta, Senator Hanger.
Thank, Mr. President. I move the committee substitute be adopted.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is adopted.
Senate Bill 668, reported from the Committee on Rehabilitation and Social Services. Senate Bill 678, reported from the Committee on Rehabilitation and Social Services. Senate Bill 679, reported from the Committee on Rules with a substitute.
Senator from Williamsburg, Senator Mason.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the substitute be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is agreed to.
Senate Bill 686, reported from the Committee on Rehabilitation and Social Services. Senate Bill 695, reported from the Committee on Rehabilitation and Social Services with amendments.
Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshe.
Mr. President, I move that the committee amendments be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendments are agreed to.
Senate Bill 706, reported from the Committee on Rehabilitation and Social Services. Senate Bill 734, reported from the Committee on Rules with amendments.
Senator from Bath, Senator Dees.
Mr. President, I would ask that you agree to the committee amendments.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendments be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendments are adopted.
Senate Bill 768, reported from the Committee on Rules with a substitute.
Senator from Southern Fairfax, Senator Barker.
Mr. President, I move that the substitute be adopted.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is adopted.
Senate Bill 790, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations with an amendment.
Senator from Bath, Senator Dees.
Mr. President, I move adoption of the committee amendment.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendment be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendment is adopted.
Senate Bill 824, reported from the Committee on Rehabilitation and Social Services with a substitute.
Senator from Mecklenburg, Senator Ruff.
Mr. President, I move the committee substitute be adopted.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is adopted.
Senate Bill 833, reported from the Committee on Rehabilitation and Social Services with a substitute.
Senator from Alexandria, Senator Eben.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adopt the committee substitute.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is adopted.
Senate Bill 888, reported from the Committee on Rules with amendments.
The senior senator.
Excuse me, Mr. President.
Senator from Alexandria, Senator Eben.
May I also on Senate Bill 833 move that we engross the bill and advance it to its third reading?
No, it's, they're all in the block. They're all in the block.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna go back to you. So now we're on Senate Bill 888. The senior senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the committee amendment be adopted.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendments be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendments are adopted.
Senate Bill 927, reported from the Committee on Rehabilitation and Social Services. Senate Bill 1005, reported from the Committee on Transportation with amendment.
Senator from Spotsylvania, Senator Reeves.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move the committee amendment, please.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendment be agreed to? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendment is agreed to.
Senate Bill 1011, reported from the Committee on Transportation with a substitute, and there is a floor substitute.
Senator from Hanover, Senator McDougal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, in order to get to the floor substitute, which has a little bit of wordsmithing with the help of the Attorney General's Office, I'm going to move that we accept the committee substitute with the recommendation that it be rejected.
Thank the senator. With the recommendation that it be rejected, the question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, say no. The noes have it. The committee substitute is rejected. Senator from Hanover, Senator McDougal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move that the reading of the floor substitute be waived.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the reading of the floor substitute be waived? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The reading of the floor substitute is waived. Senator from Hanover, Senator McDougal.
Mr. President, I move that the floor substitute be agreed to and speaking to the motion.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, we've been in communication with a number of attorneys, including the Attorney General's Office. After this went through transportation last week, over the weekend, they came up with some wordsmithing that made it clear that a licensed engineer had to be the individual signing off on these documents. And, Mr. President, that it also makes it clear that not only do the, does the sign-off have to not violate any design standards, but it also has to comply with the professional engineering standards as we already defined in the code. So it took what we were doing and made it a little bit tighter.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the floor substitute be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The floor substitute is adopted.
Senate Bill 1025, reported from the Committee on Rehabilitation and Social Services with amendments.
Senator from Henrico, Senator Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we accept the amendments.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendments are agreed to.
Senate Bill 1029, reported from the Committee on Rehabilitation and Social Services with an amendment.
Senator from Williamsburg, Senator Mason.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move that the committee amendment be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendment be agreed to? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendment is agreed to.
Senate Bill 1034, reported from the Committee on Rules. Senate Bill 1048, reported from the Committee on Rules with a substitute.
Senator from Bath, Senator Dees.
Mr. President, I move the committee substitute.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is adopted.
Senate Bill 1057, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations with a substitute.
Senator from Mecklenburg, Senator Ruff.
Mr. President, I move the committee substitute be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is agreed to.
Senate Bill 1073, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations with an amendment.
The senior senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan.
Mr. President, I move the committee amendment be adopted.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendment be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendment is adopted. The question is, shall the Senate Bills be engrossed in advance to their third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The Bills are engrossed in advance to their third reading.
Senate Bill 404, a bill relating to health insurance short-term limited-duration medical plans, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor with amendments, and there are three floor amendments.
The junior senator from Chesterfield, Senator Hachme.
Mr. President, I move the acceptance of the committee amendments and move also the acceptance of the floor amendments.
Take them one at a time.
Senator, we'll start with the committee amendments.
Thank you.
Senators made that motion. The question is, shall the committee amendments be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendments are adopted.
I would like the senator from Southern Fairfax to address the floor amendments.
Thank the senator. Senator from Southern Fairfax, you have the floor.
Mr. President, I move that the three floor amendments be adopted in a block.
Do you want to waive the reading first?
First, let's waive the reading of the floor amendments.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the reading of the floor amendments be waived? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The reading of the floor amendments is waived. Senator from Southern Fairfax, Senator Barker.
Mr. President, I renew the motion that the floor amendments be adopted in a block. What they do is two things to the bill. One is delay the effective date of the enactment to July of 2021 rather than July of 2020. And the other is to allow one renewal of a three-month term, short-term policy, and so that there would be a maximum of six months within a 12-month period that an individual could have this short-term coverage. With that, I would hope it would be the pleasure of the body to adopt these amendments.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the floor amendments be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The floor amendments are adopted. Junior senator from Chesterfield, Senator Hachme.
Mr. President, I move that SB 404 be engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall Senate Bill 404 be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The Bills are engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 253, a bill relating to deeds of trust fiduciary duties, reported from the Committee on the Judiciary with a substitute, and there are two floor amendments.
Senator from Russell, Senator Chafin.
Mr. President, may this go by for the day?
Without objection. Senate Bill 253 will go by for the day.
Senate Bill 491, a bill relating to inquiry and report of immigration status persons charged with or convicted of certain crimes, reported from the Committee on the Judiciary, and there is a floor substitute.
Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to waive reading of the floor substitute.
Question is, shall the reading of the floor substitute be waived? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The reading of the floor substitute is waived. Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell.
Mr. President, I move the floor substitute and speaking to that motion.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Folks, this legislation has to do with which crimes get reported to the federal government when people are arrested and, or it's more specifically reported to ICE. This floor substitute takes care of some of the concerns that were raised by the senator from Hanover in committee. The way the floor substitute reads right now, anybody who's processed for a felony conviction would get reported to ICE, but anybody who's convicted of a misdemeanor would be in the discretion of the local constitutional officer to share for the regional jail. So if you liked the bill before, you should like it better. If you didn't like the bill, you might like it now. But I would hope we would adopt the substitute. And I renew that motion.
Thank the senator. Question is, shall the floor substitute be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The floor substitute is adopted. Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell.
Mr. President, I move the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The Bills are engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 571, a bill relating to visitation petition of grandparent of deceased parent, reported from the Committee on the Judiciary, and we have two floor substitutes.
Senator from Henrico, Senator Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I may have that bill go by for the day. We need to have one omnibus substitute tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank the senator. Without objection, Senate Bill 571 will go by for the day.
Senate Bill 868, a bill relating to prohibited discrimination, public accommodations, employment, housing, and credit, causes of action, sexual orientation, and gender identity, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology with a substitute.
Senator from Alexandria, Senator Eben.
Mr. President, Mr. President.
Senator from Lynchburg, Senator Pete.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I have spoken to the patron, and I would ask that this bill go by for the day so that I can confer on some language.
Without objection. Senate Bill 868 will go by for the day.
Senate Bill 9, a bill relating to workers' compensation presumption of compensability for certain cases, cancers, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor with a substitute, and from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations with a substitute.
Senior Senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, with a recommendation that we reject the Commerce and Labor Committee substitute, I move we accept that we're going to have to then accept one from the Finance.
Yes. Thank the senator. With the recommendation that it be rejected, the question is, shall the Senate adopt the committee substitute from Commerce and Labor? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The noes have it. Committee substitute is rejected. Senior Senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. Chair, Mr. President, I would move that we accept the Senate Finance substitute. What that did simply was to make sure that it was clear that it was prospective going forward, and that considerably holds down the cost.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the Senate adopt the substitute from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations? All in favor, the motion will.
Mr. President.
What purpose does the senior senator from Chesapeake, Senator Cosgrove, rise?
Will the senior senator from Fairfax yield for a question?
Will Senator Yield?
Yes.
Senator Yield, you have the floor.
Thank you. Mr. President, I heard the remarks of the senior senator from Fairfax saying this is going to be prospective.
Yes.
Can you explain to me how somebody that may already have an issue is going to be affected?
Well.
Senator has the floor.
We, obviously, if it, if it was retroactive, it would give you, you know, we run into budgetary problems. And to give you an example, in 20 FY 2021, if it was retroactive, the cost would be almost $800,000 a year, and then continue to go up. This lowers it to $100,000 a year. And that's, you know, we just, I didn't want it coming out with the claws on it, and we'd have nothing.
All right, thank the gentleman.
Thank the senator. Question is, shall the Senate adopt the committee substitute from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Senate adopts the committee substitute from Finance and Appropriations. Senior Senator from Fairfax, up. One, two, three. Okay. There being eight hands, we will have a recorded vote. The question is, shall the Senate adopt the committee substitute from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations? All in favor, the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk, close the roll.
Ayes 28, knows 12.
Ayes 28, knows 12. The Senate adopts the committee substitute. Senior Senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
I would move that it now, Senate, now, in the form of a substitute be engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The Bills are engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 149, a bill relating to courthouse and courtroom security assessment, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations.
Senator from Northern Fairfax, Senator Howe.
I move the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The Bills are engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 593, a bill relating to licensed family day homes, storage of firearms, reported from the Committee on Rehabilitation and Social Services.
Senator from Augusta, Senator Hanger.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The Bills are engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 612, a bill to establish the commission for historical statutes in the United States Capitol and to provide for the replacement of the Robert E. Lee statue in the National Statutory Hall collection at the United States Capitol, reported from the Committee on Rules with amendments.
Senator from Portsmouth, Senator Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that 612 go by for the day pending some amendments that have been requested.
Thank the senator. Without objection, Senate Bill 612 will go by for the day.
Senate Bill 664, a bill relating to motor vehicle liability, insurance coverage limits, reported from the Committee on Transportation with amendments.
Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell.
Move the committee amendments.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendments be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendments are adopted. Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The Bills are engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 911, a bill relating to parking of vehicles, electric vehicle charging spots, civil penalties, reported from the Committee on Transportation with a substitute.
Junior Senator from Chesterfield, Senator Hachme.
Mr. President, I move the substitute.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is adopted. The junior senator from Chesterfield, Senator Hachme.
And, Mr. President, I do apologize. I believe there was supposed to be a floor amendment just to correct some typos in the draft, correcting some language. I'm not sure if...
Let us check. Senator want this bill to go by for the day?
We'll take it by for the day. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator. Without objection, Senate Bill 911 will go by for the day.
Senate Bill 923, a bill relating to... Senate Bill 923, a bill relating to motion picture production tax credit aggregate cap, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations, with a substitute.
Senator from Portsmouth, Senator Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the committee substitute be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is agreed to. Senator from Portsmouth, Senator Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that Senate Bill 923 be engrossed in advance to its third constitutional reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill's engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 995, a bill relating to the Washington Metropolitan Area Transit Authority labor organizations, reported from the Committee on Transportation.
Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill's engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 1035, a bill relating to motor vehicle dealers, motorcycle franchises, reported from the Committee on Transportation, with a substitute.
Senior senator from Virginia B., Senator D. Staff.
Mr. President, I move the committee substitute.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is adopted. The senior senator from Virginia B., Senator D. Staff.
Mr. President, what this bill does is, I'm sorry.
We're just going to engross in advance today.
I move that we engross in advance this to its third constitutional reading. Thank you very much.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill's engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Uncontested calendar, Senate bills on first reading.
Senior senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, I move that all Senate bills on first reading on the uncontested and regular calendar, pages 47 through 53, Senate Bill 378 through Senate Bill 961, that the rules be suspended, and the first constitutional reading of those bills be dispensed with.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the rules be suspended, and the first reading of the titles of Senate bills on the uncontested and regular calendars, pages 47 through 53, Senate Bill 378 through Senate Bill 961, be dispensed with? All in favor, the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their votes? The clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 40 knows 0.
Ayes 40 knows 0. The reading of the titles is dispensed with. Senior senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
I now move that those said bills be passed by for the day.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the Senate bills on the uncontested and regular calendars now on second reading go by for the day? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bills will go by for the day.
Uncontested calendar, Senate joint resolutions on second reading.
Senior senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, I move that all Senate joint resolutions on second reading on the uncontested calendar, pages 53 and 54, that Senate, and that's Senate Joint Resolution 35 through SJR 81, be advanced to their engrossment in third reading in a block, after the adoption of any amendments thereto. Any senators desiring to remove a resolution from the block, please do so after the clerk...
The clock.
The clock is now reading. After the clerk has read the number of the resolution.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall all Senate joint resolutions on second reading on the uncontested calendar, pages 53 through 54, Senate Joint Resolution 35 through Senate Joint Resolution 81, be engrossed in advance to their third reading in the block, after the adoption of any amendments thereto, and that any senator desiring a resolution be removed from the block will do so after the clerk has read the number of the resolution? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion is agreed to.
Senate Joint Resolution 35, reported from the Committee on Rules. Senate Joint Resolution 39, reported from the Committee on Rules. Senate Joint Resolution 66, reported from the Committee on Rules. Senate Joint Resolution 67...
Mr. President.
What purpose does the senior senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan, rise?
Thank you, Mr. President. After conferring with the patron, could Senate Joint Resolutions 66 and 67 go by for the day for some slight floor amendments?
Without objection, Senate Joint Resolutions 66 and 67 will come out of the block and go by for the day.
Senate Joint Resolution 77, reported from the Committee on Rules, and Senate Joint Resolution 81, reported from the Committee on Rules.
Question is, shall the Senate Joint Resolutions be engrossed in advance to their third reading? That is, all resolutions except for Senate Joint Resolutions 66 and 67. All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The joint resolutions are engrossed in advance to their third reading. Senior senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, I inquire of the clerk. Does that complete the calendar? The clerk, not the clock.
The clock says it's past time. Yes, sir.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Senator from Akamak, Senator Lewis.
Need to rise for an announcement, if I may.
Senator has the floor.
There will be a meeting, a very brief meeting of the local government committee here at my desk immediately upon adjournment. It's a little housekeeping we need to take up from our last meeting. Very important that you stop by here, but it won't take any time at all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank the senator. For what purpose does Senator from Fairfax City, Senator Peterson, rise?
Thank you, Mr. President. Rise for an announcement.
Senator has the floor.
All my colleagues on the Ag and Natural Resources Committee, please be there 30 minutes sharp. We're going to take up the first bill immediately from the Chair of P&amp;E, so he can go on about